All right.
We're all here. Awesome. And seeing that it's six o'clock, and I've called an order, the Belleville Village Board of Trustees for Monday, April 21st at 6:00 PM. Pledge of Allegiance.
President Durvis.
Here.
The trustee Baumgard.
Here.
Sorry, out of order, trustee Bannon.
Yeah.
Just I could crap.
Here.
Let's see, Kazmar.
Here.
Let's see, Ward.
There's a, there's a, there's a.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Confirmation voting, open meeting compliance.
The meeting was discussed as required by law.
Thank you. Public participation allows citizens to be heard on any agenda and non-agenda item. The public may also comment during the public participation section of each item. The village board shall make no decisions or consideration of action, of citizen comments or items not on the agenda, except to refer the matter to the village administrator for administrative consideration, or to schedule the matter for forward consideration at later dates. And if people signed in, that want to wish to speak, in the approached podium, state your name and try to keep your comments to three minutes, please.
Start with Connie Erfer.
Here for Belleville, Wisconsin. We, the citizens of Belleville and the surrounding area, would like you to consider selling the old library to the Dana, or sorry, not. Doppler Smith Post 460 American Legion. They need more space and a safer place. There are so many steps and some people are not able to do the steps and enjoy their bingo. There are older ones of us who are extremely, have extremely hard time with the steps and they are looking for a lighter building to get in and out of. They would like to do more programs to benefit Belleville if they had a better space. We were told once that they didn't want to sell the library to the Legion because they'd get no foot, whatever you call it. They wouldn't make any money for Belleville. Now, here are some of the things the Legion does, or sponsors during the year. They offer poppies prior to Memorial Day in the community. Prior to Memorial Day, they put flags on the veterans' graves in Belleville and close, close surrounding cemeteries in Green and Dane. They are flagging 400 to 500 graves every year. They have a memorial service at the high school on Memorial Day. During COVID, they had a brief ceremony at the Veterans Park. They, along with the student body, are part of the Veterans Day program at the high school every year. Veterans are honored there with their quilt of valor. The Legion sponsors Badger Boys at the cost of 800 and Badger Girls at the cost of 1,000. The school selects junior high boys and girls to attend camp for a week to learn practice of how government works. The Legion has in the past, I'm sorry, I'm trying to go fast here. In the past sponsored County Government Day at the State Capitol, information is provided to the high school. Students are offered law enforcement training, information at Camp McCoy with the State Patrol. Students are offered a chance for testing for scholarships, scoring on government knowledge. They also offer two to three, 200 scholarships for graduates every year to continue their education. They sponsor the American Legion baseball. This is made of high school students. Post 460 sponsors local Boy Scout troops, allowing them to use their building. Post 60 has donated time and money to the local churches. Post 460 has donated to the Sugar River Seniors. They have donated to the fire department. Post 60, 460 supports the community club, they furnish their bingo cards for their use. In the past, they have donated to the Turkey Drop. They have donated to the Quilt of Valor Ladies, they have donated for the EMS and fire department in the park. I'm sorry. They have supported and have been a part of the UFO days, does that mean I have to shut up? Belleville community has had many veterans go to the Veteran Honor Flight, which they support. The following events are in our building. They have winter bingo for public seating for anywhere from 35 to 50 people and all ages come and enjoy the afternoon. These happen January, February, March, and April, and they feel that this would be more, there would be more people if there was more room and less steps. February's meeting is, is an appreciation dinner for members and spouses or guests and deceased veteran spouses. July, they hold an outdoor dinner for members and spouses or guests. November is their big event and it is the Feather Party and Bingo. This is open to the public and is a yearly fundraiser. The American Legion meets once a month. Most recently, with the generous support of residents and past families and local businesses, organizations, they were able to plan and construct the Veterans Memorial Park. As you can see, the Legion does a lot for the community and could do more with a bigger and safer place. We owe our veterans our freedom and our peaceful life. Many of these men and women went to wars, young boys and girls. And now are aging and could use a place with less steps and more room. We are asking as taxpayers, as family, friends of these men and women, let's do this for them. It's time for us to step up for our veterans.
Wendell Fusserman.
Wendell Fusserman, I live in Brooklyn. Was past owner of residential property and commercial property in Belleville and Exeter Township for approximately 35 years. Representing the Doppler Smith Post 460 American Legion. First and foremost, I want to publicly thank Connie Erfer for coming forth and supporting us and our organization. And Connie has done more than that for the years, you may or may not know. When she was a student teacher aide at the high school, she had young children to use their tape around the flagpole and she would explain to the kids the importance of what that flagpole meant and the flag. Later on, she has been very integral in the Veterans Day program. It's always held in November, either on or near Veterans Day. Her and the high school, they put on a fantastic program up there. So I just want to thank Connie for that, for supporting the American Legion too. Here we are, April 2025. Some of your faces I know, many of them I do. In April 2021, village board put a notice in the paper that they wanted to sell the library building and anybody interested in purchasing it could file the necessary paperwork, which we did. We're the only ones that did it at that time. Since then, we've made other avenues to discuss with three village administrators. And now, Mr. President, I see fourth president we've been dealing with. So we've been trying to be very patient and calm. And we want to work with the village board. We want to continue to confirm that we do want to purchase the old library building at 130 South Bind Street. I can only hope within your hearts, when you discuss in closed session, you've taken consideration of all the veterans that have grown up, lived, come back to Belleville, and made their whole lives here in Belleville. We have on the Veterans Memorial Parks that Connie mentioned, that we built because of the generosity of families that donated the money and the local businesses that donate and support us every year also. There's over 850 names. A lot of them names you'll recognize if you go over and read them. There, every one of them names have some kind of tie-in to the Belleville community. So when you take them names and the families and how many other people live in the townships and the village of Belleville, which by the way, all pay taxes to build the old library at 130 South Bind Street. So everybody has an interest in, in our interest is to make Belleville community a better place. For your time.
Sorry, we're having technical difficulties.
Stronger batteries?
Okay, just angle it. All right, Chris.
Chris Ace, Belleville, Wisconsin. We farm in Exeter Township. We've been in Exeter Township on our farm for 100 years. Elvis grandfather was a volunteer in the volunteer army for the Civil War. He's got two brothers that are buried, that are memorialized down the memorial coming into town. That was another thing that I don't believe was mentioned, but lots of times people talk about how our entrance into town is very beautiful, well, we made one of the most beautiful little parks in memorial to our veterans, but our Legion. And I wanted to bring that up. Also, it just seems that they've had so much patience for a long time. And it just seems like there's so many people in town who really think that they deserve a chance, not a handout, because they offered to pay for it and they went through the paperwork that you're supposed to have. They've done all of the right things and it just seems like the right things are not being recognized. And I just feel that all these people can't be wrong. And that building is sitting there. How much income have you gotten off of it for four years? Now, you could have had what they wanted to pay you invested for those four years. So I'm just saying, you've got a great group that does a lot of things for the village. And it seems that many of the village people are behind them and enjoy the the way they spend their money on generational things. When we go to bingo, it's grandmas and grandpas and small children and the moms and dads and it's a nice family quality event they put on. I just want to support them and all the work they've done and they've had the patience of Job to put up with all this. Please reconsider selling it to them. Thank you.
Teresa Pelton, I'm with the Village of Belleville Municipal Court and the professional judicial assistant. And I just wanted to point out to the village board and to the public and put it on record that the Village of Belleville Municipal Court does not automatically dismiss citations just because of a community, it's tied to a community event. That was in the paperwork, that was in the packet, a comment made. And I just wanted to make sure that the board and the public all know that the Village of Belleville Municipal Court does not automatically dismiss tickets just because it's tied to a community event. And if you have questions about any of the ways that the Village of Belleville Municipal Court is operating, please contact the court, myself and/or Judge Jean. She would have been here today, however, she's out of town for a conference. And again, if you have any questions, public or board, please give me a call at the office. My office is here in this building. Thank you.
I just got to do something at once. But go ahead, Anne.
I'm Anne Stats from Belleville. I live in Exeter, I'm a veteran and I am part of the Legion. So I just kind of wonder, out of the village board, is there any veterans here? Is there anybody whose parents is a veteran? Okay, so I would just ask you for the politeness of a response. Yes, we want to buy the building, but we'd also like a response, an official response from you. So that's what I just, thank you.
That's all I have for the comment.
Anyone else wishing to speak on a non-agenda item?
I'm Lally Myrent, I'm also a veteran. I moved to Belleville three years ago and I immediately joined the Legion because I didn't know anybody here. So I wanted to get to know people and these guys have been wonderful, they're welcoming to me. I've had two or three surgeries since I've been here and for two of them, I was on a knee scooter and could not attend any of the meetings that we had several months because I couldn't get into the building. I had crutches, but I'm very unsafe on crutches, I just follow work very easily. So anyway, I would really, and since I've been here, that's all I've heard about is how the village has not addressed having the building and buying the library and I can't figure out why. I've been here for three years and I almost four and I just don't know why. And to not be able to attend meetings and participate and have that social outlet that I look forward to every month was disappointing to me, especially when I was handicapped at the time. And I'm thinking of other veterans who serve, who may be in a wheelchair from their injuries from war. I didn't serve in a war, I was very blessed that way. But a lot of the military people have served in wars and have injuries and they can't get into the building because they're injured. And I just don't think that that's appropriate at this time. I feel like that's something that we need as a country as well as a county or village. Sorry, that was last minute, thank you.
There's no more public comments, we'll move on to the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member requests it, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered the first item after the approval of the consent agenda. I believe Gary wanted a couple items separated out, right?
Yes. F and K.
I too. E, F, I, and K.
Yeah, I, and K.
So anyone?
I make a motion to approve the consent. Second.
With the exclusion of?
Of E, F, I, and K, was it?
So we're going to go A through D, G, H. Was that J and K?
I'll get it in there correctly. I, and K.
I'll get with E, F, I, and K. I'll do it there. I'm sorry, I forgot the second there because everybody's fast on the draw. You go, Tony?
Those in favor? Opposed? That passes and then another motion for the items that were excluded in the first motion, correct?
I'll make a motion that we approve E, F, I, and K.
I'll second it.
Those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Halbstein.
Passes. Village President's report, I do not have a report for tonight. Not much has gone on since last week, so. F reports.
I do have to report that a statement of intent recall was turned in last, the 17th. It's Thursday, they have until June 16th to circulate those recall papers. And after that, if they do turn those in, then there's a bunch of other dates and timelines and deadlines that will follow. Or the statutes for that, but just so you're aware. Alcohol licensing, if you have a current operator's license, it will expire June 30th. Please come in and renew that. Information can be found on the village website.
Two, we've got presentations. Well, here, first one is recognition, Katie Uker, correct? Anniversary? Uker? Yep.
Evening, ladies and gentlemen. As part of the newly approved village personnel manual, there is recognition for employees that serve five or plus years and they're normally done in five-year increments. So tonight, we are recognizing three of the police department staff for their commitment and dedication to the village of Belleville. The first is Officer Caitlin Uker, who is being recognized for five years of dedicated service to the Belleville Police Department. Her professionalism initiative and community-focused mindset have made her invaluable to our team. Prior to joining in the Belleville Police Department, Officer Uker served with the Janesville Police Department, bringing with her valuable experience and a strong commitment to public service. Officer Uker plays a key role in the department operations, serving as coordinator for the annual Public Safety Night, event that brings the community together and highlights the vital work of responders. As is also the department's go-to officer for liquor license compliance checks, ordinance enforcement, and consistent in ensuring safety and accountability within the community. Outside of work, Officer Uker enjoys spending quality time with her family and indulging her sweet tooth at bakeries across the state. Her warm personality and dedication, both on and off duty, make her a cherished part of the Belleville Police Department family. We congratulate Officer Uker on her milestone and thank her for her continued service and contributions to the department, so.
So thank you.
Next one is going to be for Nicole, our administrative assistant. Come on down, you're the next participant on the price thread. So. Nicole is the administrative assistant, is being recognized for her five years' service to the Belleville Police Department and the Belleville community. Nicole's attention to detail and exceptional organizational skills have made an invaluable asset to the department and to the community we serve. Before joining the Belleville Police Department, Nicole gained valuable experience in both, from both the Beloit Police Department and the Madison Police Department, where she honed her records management skills. Her well-warned background has equipped her to handle a wide range of responsibilities within the department, including two records management system, the Spelman's Record Management System on the Green County side and the Lerm's Record Management System on the Dane County side. Nicole serves as the cornerstone of records, as the records department. In addition, Nicole is the first and friendly face you see when you come to the department's service window, often being assisted by Lieutenant Jacks, the department cat. To welcome visitors with a warm professional demeanor. Her diverse duties span across just managing our records management systems, but also to doing our, performing social media and assisting with various administrative tasks, providing support to myself and to Molly, the sergeant. Her adaptability and willingness to take any task makes her reliable and efficient team member. Outside of work, Nicole enjoys spending time with her children, with her ponies, and embracing the joys of family life and outdoor activities. We congratulate Nicole on her five years of dedicated service to the community and Department of Belleville. Thank you. Thank you. So, and last but not least, is Sergeant Molly.
You're fired. Oh, God. I go home now.
I will say this, Molly was not going to show up tonight unless we had donuts, so I'm surprised she's here.
You made me bait here.
So Molly is being recognized tonight for 21, this, 21 years of distinguished service to the Belleville Police Department. Her dedication, leadership, and commitment to public safety have made a lasting impact, not only to the department, but to the community of Belleville. Before joining the Belleville Police Department, Molly served as the law enforcement officer for the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources, where she developed a strong foundation in conservation, law enforcement, and public outreach. Throughout her careers, Molly has continued to demonstrate her passion for professional development and training. She is a state-certified instructor for firearms, emergency vehicle operations, standard field sobriety tests, and vehicle contacts. Not only does she provide these trainings to the police department, but is also an instructor for Black Hawk Technical College Law Enforcement Academy. Her contributions to training mentoring fellow officers have played a vital role in maintaining the department's high standards of safety and preparedness. Outside her professional responsibilities, she enjoys spending time riding her horses and exploring her love of food.
And no one is surprised.
Yes. So Molly, Molly's commitment to the law enforcement, this community, and her fellow officers is deeply appreciated. And she's been a heck of a soldier with me. Trying to get me up to par, which is a challenge in and of itself. We congratulate her on her significant milestone and thank her for her outstanding service, so. Thank you. No. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you all, your services appreciated. New business. First item is discuss and consider a resolution to join the WLGCC.
This is a recommendation from the Parks and Rec Committee. Parks and Rec Committee heard the executive director of the WLGCC. One of the meetings, it's just a group of local governments. We are interested in kinds of climate change or climate action, whether that's policies, operations. The thing that the Parks and Rec Committee talked about was how do we make some of our water retention ponds maybe a little bit more climate-friendly? So that we don't have to maintain them and water maintenance is free, so trying to get resources that way. It's no cost, it's mainly just a networking opportunity. So they made the recommendation to send it to the board for.
So on their website, they do a lot with green initiatives, so. I guess what? Do you know more about like what that benefit is or is there a benefit or what, how do they?
A new network for us to, we started having questions, we're going to go to. Yeah, in our comprehensive plan, that we would be more green, sustainable. We haven't ever done much with it, so starting that, ranging out.
Make the motion that we join the WLGCC. So second, a deb. Those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Back to the chief again, discuss, consider a Flock safety camera system.
In your packet, you have a staff memo from me regarding the Flock camera system. Tonight, via virtual link, we have representatives from Flock to discuss the system, the advantages of implementing such a system. As you can see in my report, this has been on kind of the priority list of the department since 2023. It was brought back to life in discussions this year with the village administrator in his conversation with other municipalities that have the Flock system in place. And so the staff, based on the information the staff has gathered over the years and up-to-date information as of late, I present to you Flock. I'll let Bodie and Jonathan give their presentation. And then if you have any questions in regards to the system after they get done with their presentation, we'll discuss those questions and then the pricing and the possibilities of implementation after that.
Good evening, could folks hear me?
Yep.
Thanks so much for having us, my name is Jonathan Pass, I'm part of the public affairs team here at Flock. Would love to share really quickly. We were founded with a, with the mission of shaping a safer future together. We were actually founded when our CEO a safer future together. We were actually founded when our CEO was the victim of property crime in his neighborhood. There was a series of car break-ins, and at the time he thought, you know, having this doorbell camera footage would be enough to apprehend the suspects. Turns out, it did not. He went to his local police department, and they told him they needed the license plate. So he did some research and found out that license plate reading technology has been around for over 30 years. It's just typically pretty cost prohibitive. So he developed a prototype, now the best-in-class, that doesn't break the bank. We are now in over we're now in over 5,000 communities, really helping solve over 10% of crime, really helping answer this paradox where police are expected to do more with less. What we believe is the answer is having a collaborative policing technology that really becomes a force multiplier, making them more effective at their job, particularly when it comes to investigating and being able to work with the community. We have a whole host of solutions, but what we're talking about today is our license plate readers. So this is the way it works, right? It's a light, it's a motion-activated camera. So if a car drives by one of these cameras, it just takes a snapshot of the back of a car, and it takes stock of two things. Number one, the license plate, right? And then number two, the vehicular fingerprint, meaning any distinguishable characteristics of the vehicle, like the color, the make, if it has a bike rack. That information is inputted into the system, and that becomes a very important tool, right? For investigations, where you kind of have these objective breadcrumbs of where maybe a suspect has been. But also, it's a proactive tool where this information is integrated with the National Crime Information Center. So you get these real-time alerts. Number one, if a missing person is coming into your jurisdiction, if a stolen vehicle, number two, a stolen vehicle, and then number three, if someone with a felony warrant is coming into your jurisdiction, you will get notified in real time. So you really get this perimeter, right? This 24/7 coverage while being able to, you know, proactively and then reactively be able to solve crime. This is what it looks like to get a real-time alert. This is a car associated with catalytic converter thefts. So you can get like a snapshot notification like this via text message, email. This is what it would look like for your police department to work with the system. And then you can search through criteria, right? Because when crime happens, people don't typically remember the license plate, but they remember what the vehicle looks like. So this is, you can input different information about a vehicle through these criteria. I did want to speak really to, I really wanted to speak to privacy and how we built this technology with privacy in mind. I apologize. I'm in East Coast time, so it's been a bit of a long day here. But we believe in privacy, and we enable you to work with this data. This is your data. We just help store it. It's stored in an AWS government cloud and encrypted. We believe security is paramount. And the data is deleted after 30 days. That's on a rolling basis. So unless some data is being taken into some kind of investigative docket, right, to help a case, data that's not being used for that purpose will be deleted, and that's a hard delete. And you can't go into the system and just search around what your neighbor's doing. You do need a search reason, and any search in the system is part of an indefinitely available audit trail. So we do enable accountability and transparency mechanisms, and we go a step further and provide a transparency portal, so free of charge. So if you'd like, we can add one of these. This is a real-life portal out of Vallejo, California, but you can publicize in your city website what this technology is, what it's not, what it's being used for. Some agencies go a step above and beyond and provide, if there's like the number of stolen vehicles that they take, for example. So just to recap really quickly, we'd love to be a partner with you. We want to be your safety-as-a-service partner for one fixed price per camera per year. It's $3,000 per camera per year. You get all of these benefits upfront. You get the solar power devices, the installation, the ongoing maintenance, the permitting, the data storage, and any lifetime hardware, software upgrades, we help you maintain. And we want to make sure the system's up and running at 100%. So it's very important, and we make sure that this is, it's always up and running. So there are a couple of case studies I wanted to share really quickly, but we do have a strong presence across Wisconsin, working with over 160 law enforcement agencies. Cottage Grove, St. Qua, I don't want to butcher anymore, Altoona. But, you know, we did have some success out of Rice Lake, where the police received an alert from one of their license plate reader cameras, that a U-Haul event was stolen out of a city out of Eau Claire. So the Barron County Sheriff and the Rice Lake Police Department located the unoccupied U-Haul in a parking lot. At the time, there were actually two men who got into the U-Haul, upon which, you know, the officers approached them. The U-Haul backed up and began to flee, so a pursuit continued from, you know, going as fast as 90 to 110 miles per hour, where officers deployed stop sticks. So later on, the suspects were arrested, and illegal narcotics, including meth, were also found in the vehicle. Situations like these can happen, and it's just important to be able to have this, you know, situational awareness, which we were able to help provide. I did want to speak about one quick robbery that happened in Barron Police Department, where officers responded to reports of an armed robbery. There was an elderly victim who stated that two suspects entered into his residence, assaulted him, and tied him up, and stole over $10,000 worth of cash, guns, and jewelry. So the investigators interviewed the neighbors, who stated that a tan SUV had been parked in front of the victim's house. So the officers queried their Flock safety license plate readers for vehicles matching this description. Again, working with very imperfect information, they were able to find a vehicle that fit the description, and they detected it in a near-crime scene that was around in that area around the time that occurred. So they were able to identify the vehicle's owners and issued a warrant for their arrest. Again, being able to respond quickly to these critical situations while being able to work off of very imperfect information, again highlighting the importance of our network. I wanted to be brief, but happy to help answer any questions here with Cody.
So just to give you a couple of personal perspectives as well. In talking with staff in regards to Flock camera system, when the Dan Bar was broken into back in January, when the officers did their canvas, though there were ring camera systems, and I use that word, you know, as kind of a cover-for-all type of those types of systems, didn't pick up anything. With the, one of the areas that we would be looking at is right at Main and River there for cameras. That could have been very beneficial from that due to the fact that most crimes are now committed that have motor vehicles in it. The other example I have is when I was your interim police chief, I was still working with the City of Milton Police Department as part-time officer. New Year's Day, I was doing follow-up on a missing adult that suffered from Alzheimer's, who went from the City of Milton to Fort Atkinson to go to a New Year's Eve gathering at the local BFW in Fort Atkinson. Through a partnership that the state has with Flock, in addition to law enforcement agencies giving access to their camera systems, we were basically able to track that gentleman's car from leaving the Janesville interstate, then getting off the interstate onto side roads, all the way to a southern suburb of Chicago, where that law enforcement agency was able to make contact with him. Now, it wasn't a, you know, like minute-by-minute accounting of his travel, but every time a Flock camera he came near, fought the license plate because a silver alert had been issued in the state of Wisconsin and the state of Illinois. The Flock cameras in Illinois would report back to the Department of Justice with the state, who would then notify us. So within a short, basically eight-hour, eight- or nine-hour time period, we're able to locate that missing adult. So just a couple of examples from that standpoint, from my personal experience. So. And then moving forward, if anybody has any questions in regards to the program itself, if not, we can kind of work into the financing aspect of it and the options that are available. From our standpoint, in 2025, there is no money built into the village's budget to absorb the minimum of two cameras, which would account for $12,000. But I don't know, Jonathan or Cody, if you want to speak to alternatives?
You said two cameras, $12,000. It's $3,000 per acre. So Chief and I specifically, over the last couple of months, have worked on a plan. It's called a project prove it. And hearing you on your funding and kind of where the village stands there, we're looking at potentially installing around four to six cameras on a, I guess, trial period is what you'd call it. We would do this near the end of the year. And after the trial runs its course with those six cameras, that's where we decide which cameras work the best, which ones were most beneficial, and what did we see from this trial. At the end of that trial, that's when Chief has the power to say, hey, we logged all this, and we were able to unleash or get some funding to keep a couple of them, or we can keep all of them. It's kind of a, I guess, prove it out before you commit to a long-term partnership plan that Chief and I have been working through.
Chief, where do you anticipate the, if we were to keep two cameras, where do you think those would be?
Initially, the staff in their, back in their 2023 emails, I guess, back and forth to each other, would be at Main and River here. The next would be over by Quick Trip in that area, was on PB, and then on Main Street in that area. Now, keep in mind with these cameras. Because basically, they can, they're for sure, and Cody and Jonathan, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's one lane for up to 75 feet from the camera to get a good picture of the license plate and vehicle description from that standpoint. So that's why they kind of, I look at it from the standpoint of two cameras in the area. So basically, you get northbound and like an eastbound or westbound, depending on how we set them up from that probability.
Yeah, pretty spot on. If a two-lane road is traveling north, there's a great chance that the camera's going to pick up both of those lanes traveling the same direction. You would want, if you want a north and south, you would definitely want a camera on each side of the road.
Like, I know this is kind of a very subjective question, but like, how often do you anticipate accessing these camera systems to respond to some kind of alert? I mean, what is a realistically use level?
For this community, because it's, and that's why Cody and I talked about a trial period, because I'm not sure. We're kind of, Belleville's kind of situated, and it's growing, where based on complaints we've received from both, and then intelligence we receive, because we're only 30 minutes from downtown Madison, same with Monroe and that kind of stuff, is how much is really coming through our community that is also going to other communities in southwest Wisconsin, whether it be for crimes, whether it be for drugs. I know when I was your interim police chief, Molly had gotten intelligence about a drug exchange that was going to take place in the Quick Trip parking lot. One party was coming from Madison, the other party was coming from Barnabell. Now, I call it dopor time, so don't know quite what happened, but they never met up, because we had a description, that kind of stuff. And we were in the unmarked at that time, so unless they were pretty savvy and saying, oh, you know, that looks like two cops, or that looks like a squad car, or again, they just forgot that they were going to do their meetup for whatever via social media or texting, decided not to do it that day. So those, you know, in the short time I've been here, there's been incidents like that. So I think there's value with it, especially with only having one officer on duty at a time. If we go with the alert notifications, that can be helpful as well. So it's not going to be that we're going to have one officer monitoring that 24/7, you know, in front of a computer, but the alert system. So for instance, like that elderly missing person, basically Rock County, a deputy on duty because of that silver alert, he was actively watching it, even though he was responsible for a sector in, you know, in Rock County. But every time it ticked off, he got an alert. He called me, notified where it ticked off at and what the delay was, you know, so that we could kind of estimate his travel, you know, his travel path from there. So and then I would relay that information, if the state didn't already know it, to the State Department of Justice, who would be tracking, was tracking it as well. So, yeah, so, I mean, we're an up-and-coming community, and as was alluded to before, is that staffing is always, you know, an issue, and especially in today's market, it's even become kind of dog-eat-dog, you know? It's hard to get good staff. So any avenue that we can explore that will help in effectiveness and efficiency in keeping our community safe, because our community is relatively safe, and we want to keep it that way. But as the community grows, it can also attract people that are, have less than good intentions in our community. In addition there, too, we do have an aging population. Alzheimer's isn't always an up-and-coming issue with more and more people suffering varying degrees of Alzheimer's. So that would also be, I guess, that's really our concentration is those two things. So that's why I kind of want to do the trial, and then right now, I just put in the financials for two cameras at $6,000, because again, we really don't know how effective that we're, you know, that is, is the return on investment going to be worth it? So.
Right. I mean, that's, that's my core concern. For two cameras at $6,000 a year seems expensive to me. So I'm trying to understand the use.
So that's my question. You've got two different numbers in here. You've got two cameras, or $3,000 annually, and then you say two cameras for costs of $6,000 or $12,000 annually. So if they're $3,000 a piece, and we only go two, it's going to be $6,000.
Correct. Yeah, that was a typo on my ear. The $12,000 was if we went with the four.
So and the other point is, if we're going to do this trial, and we're going to consider this as part of for the next year's budget, we can't wait till the end of the year to do the trial to see how many, what kind of statistics we get out of it. We need to do that sooner than later, I would think.
I would agree. I want to. How long of a trial did you say you were willing to do?
It's a 60-day trial that starts when the cameras are installed. So my two cents here, and I've talked to Chief about this, we'll collaborate on it again later on. But I agree, let's do the two-month trial. Once that ends, ideally, we bleed it into the 2026 year, since, you know, at the end of that trial, you'll say, yes, we want to keep them. We only want to keep a couple, whatever it might be. So I agree, like, we should start collecting the data sooner than later. One. Two. It's a risk-free trial. Two cameras, I think, is a beneficial start. If we're going to do it, I would recommend we do it a little bit bigger on the trial, and we decide which cameras did the best. So for instance, four or six cameras is obviously going to collect a little bit more data than two. Then we could look at, see, to see which arteries into town or which arteries out of town were actually the most beneficial for us. Since it's risk-free, at the end of it, if $6,000 for the two cameras is what makes sense to you all, great, we could do that, and we'll amend the agreement and take away the four for no cost at all. Or we'll keep all four or six if it was a benefit. And then my last part would be, Chief is, Chief's talking about it really well. You guys get to collaborate with all of the other cameras in the network. For instance, if a stolen vehicle crosses a camera in your town and you get that hit, 20 minutes later, it hits Verona's cameras, you're going to be notified as the second it hits Verona's. So it's not just like your cameras in town, it's the whole network of Wisconsin as well. Really anywhere, but probably Wisconsin makes the most sense for you.
Did you say the alerts were real-time?
Yes, they are. And I'm, and we've really just talked about alerts with stolen vehicles, anything in the NCIC database, which we refresh with every six hours. If Chief gets a phone call this morning at 7:00 AM and gets a vehicle description of someone that broke into a retail store or something, he searches that vehicle, and we show you every image that crossed into your town from that time period. He could enter what's called a custom hot list as well. So it's not just the NCIC integration. It's Chief and his team entering plates that they need to be aware of if they're entering or exiting town because of a specific reason. So that's a custom alert.
My question then is, we have limited coverage. We don't have 24-hour coverage. Say something since at 2:00 AM. What good is that camera going to do us if there's no one to respond?
So that's where the partnership would come in with like, you know, let's call it the big dogs in Dane County with Dane County and City of Madison. We would partner with them with the understanding that, you know, with the limited use of that camera, that they could have access to ours. So correct me if I'm wrong, Cody, but if the hit were to come within the village of Belleville, that would also notify if like Dane County had entered the information or City of Madison had entered the information, it would alert them as well?
Correct. If they entered that hot list alert, if it was a specific situation, they would get notified in real time with the NCIC alerts, just because they have that access. Yeah, same thing like Verona and Monroe are both kind of sandwiched above and below you guys. They just expand. Yeah, same thing like Verona and Monroe are are both kind of sandwiched above and below you guys. They just expanded a couple cameras each and keep growing their operation, started a little smaller, they see the success it brings and they just keep adding more cameras. Same thing, if they entered that plate or if the stolen vehicle crossed your cameras than theirs, they would get that alert in real time.
Oh, but it has cameras.
Pardon me?
Verona does have cameras.
Verona and Pittsburgh do, so.
And then Dane County, obviously.
Yeah, yep. So if you're traveling down the highway, here's a perfect example. I don't know if you have noticed, but you'll see sometimes there'll be a black pole with a black camera and a solar panel on it. Sometimes it's a silver pole with a black camera and the solar panel on it. And it's kind of facing opposite directions. So, you know, you're going northbound, but you see the cameras kind of facing southbound. Well, what it's doing, because not all states require a front license plate, law enforcement agencies set it up that way, so they at least catch the back of the vehicle. So when you see those on side of the highway, that's what those are as part of that flock system. So, yeah. Pardon me?
I think Arena has them.
It's possible, yeah. So, yeah. Yeah, like I said, it's, it's, I wasn't real sure of it at first, but then after my experience with the city of Milton and how they tracked it, I mean, for a while there, it got overwhelming for me, being the only officer on on New Year's Day, having Department of Justice in Rock County and that kind of stuff calling me with information and then getting information from the state of Illinois, from those law enforcement agencies. And like I said, this gentleman did not travel the interstate. He was traveling side highways to that. But how, it was very interesting to see how quick they captured it and by, I think he was reported missing at like nine, ten o'clock that previous night. And we had him located by one PM New Year's Day. So.
So what's all included with the the three thousand dollar annual fee per camera? It sounds like there's, there's a service level of some sort, there's storage retention for a period of time. And then hardware and software maintenance, I assume, is included with that. When it comes to the hardware side, like, when, when would the camera be replaced? Like, you know, it sounds like these are mounted on poles, so they're hopefully out of reach of criminals, but you know, what what if a camera gets vandalized or something?
It's, it's, it's hard to speak about it because it, like you said, it's out of reach, right? They're at least twelve feet up in the air. We'll, we'll help you take care of anything like that, though. It's all situational. They have a tracking GPS on them. If they've ever would get ripped off and stolen, you would know where it is. The, the main updates that we take care of are things like software updates, similarly to our phones, our computers, always rolling out with the latest technology. These cameras are doing the same thing. I guess a good example would be how we enhance our night vision a handful of months back, things like that, where we're getting, making the cameras better, that automatically rolls out from our team. Installation, maintenance, making sure that they're up to speed and and that they're working. We get flagged when they're not working and our team hops right on it. Support. And then, of course, I think one of the most valuable pieces to that model is the shared network that your police department is going to have access to.
Are there any other licensing fees, for example, if you need a certain number of people that are going to receive alerts? Or is that that kind of unlimited or what?
It is unlimited. We would definitely want, and it's chief's call, but we would definitely want everyone at the police department to have their own login and their own alert system going. And there's no extra fees. It's, it's straight up front. Chief's invoice will be exactly what it is. And again, if we go the trial route, that invoice is something that could change depending on what we want to keep at the, the duration of the trial once it runs its course.
There are additional features that we're not looking at yet, or, you know, but seem, seems like so many packages of things have add-ons, so I'm just wondering if there's additional add-ons beyond what you're looking at that you might want in the future?
Yeah, definitely. We're a growing technology and hardware company. We have a full suite of products from live video cameras, pan tilt zoom three sixty degrees, mobile security trailers, speed trailers, drones, or and and the the Flock OS platform is where everything lives and that's where these. Yeah, there's a screenshot of kind of everything we do there. There are some advanced features as well. We have what's called Enhanced LPR. So you install four license plate readers in town, your Enhanced LPR makes researching and makes things like plate swapping, possibly, if you're noticing plate swaps or convoy searches, you know, maybe there's a string of ATM thefts or something like that. We have an enhanced add-on feature to your existing cameras that make searches like that and and identifying plate swaps on vehicles doable. It's a little bit of an add-on because sometimes it doesn't make sense for some people. But it's definitely a little bit more advanced than the standard LPR. We have over two thousand of these license plate readers installed in Wisconsin alone, and they're really working well for the police department, especially our leaner departments. Not to be confused with the fact that Madison is flooded with cameras, Milwaukee area, you couldn't drive down a street without seeing one of the cameras most likely, so it's working well for all agencies. But I notice it really is that force multiplier for a department with a chief and four or five officers. It's essentially like adding an officer on the corner of your main artery into town. And they log every plate, every make, every model of the vehicle, feed it right into your computer and you can search for that if you need to, because you, you know, you heard of a crime that went on or because a crime did go on.
How does this, Chief, how does this differ compared to our next agenda item for the camera systems and the cars and the body cams? Because I think what I saw there, that that also has license plate recognition abilities. Is that?
No, that's for the redaction side of things. So what the next agenda item has to do is with body cameras, with the in-car cameras, basically capturing the contact the officer has with citizens. In addition there, too, with the in-car cameras, it has a pre-record. So for instance, we have a case that's going before the municipal court where the driver is contesting that they actually ran a stop sign. Well, because of the pre-record on the squad camera, you can see the car, you know, roll right through the stop sign, no questions asked. So two different platforms is what it comes down to. So.
So the, the license plate recognition thing is different?
Yeah, so under Wisconsin state law, under the court decisions that are being handed down, we, we have to redact a lot more from our stuff. So what that does is it allows us to basically, you know, identify that object and then redact that if it doesn't have any connection to the case. So mainly, it's really helpful in like hospital settings for HIPAA law or in like a domestic violence situation, that kind of stuff. So, yep.
I guess, timing-wise, when would you expect to do a trial? Would that be summer, fall, closer to?
I'll refresh my memory. Was it August we were shooting for?
That would be, like, we would need to get this moving. And when I say moving, chief and I need to wrap up some pilot paperwork and get it into the queue. There's probably a chance we're on like DOT locations where our team will handle all that permitting and stuff. So we would want to get you into the queue. And yeah, I think that like August, September timeframe would be a good timeframe to run, run its course. We're probably looking around that late summer timeframe as we speak right now. And we can get a little more creative if we have to. For instance, chief and I could say, let's do September, October. That way, we're getting closer to the end of year when the trial is going to be ended.
I'm going to raise my point again. If we're going to, if it's going to be a budget decision, we're going to need to have those statistics earlier than later so that we can decide if we want two or four or six or none. So my question is, if we put those up in August and it's a two-month trial, we're not going to have an approved budget until November, December, and the money wouldn't be able to be this, I should say, shouldn't be able to be spent until January. So in those three months that could be there, would you take those cameras down and then reinstall them if we decided to purchase them at that point? Or because there's going to be some lifetime and there were, they're going to be up and we're not going to make a decision until the budget's finalized.
Yeah, that's something I'm, I, I, I need to work with chief on. We're, we're willing to work with your timeline to make sure that you have enough time to to make your decisions. And then the last thing we would want to do is come pick them up. So we can all get creative with chief. I guess we're looking for a green light to get creative and and to figure out which two months make sense with your guys' budget and with chief's needs as well. Yeah, I, I mean, we, we could probably get creative. I don't know what that quite means yet, but I, I definitely think we could install them sooner than later. You're going to, and from my experience with doing trials, I think you'll have collected a great amount of data within the first few weeks of of installation. You get two months, but I do think that the, the data will be pretty transparent once you get the first camera installed. Within the weeks, you'll, you'll see, you know, some great success. From our experience, I don't think you'll be any different. But I'll work with chief on a perfect timeline if if we're able to get something going and make sure it makes sense.
Because I, I mean, I think it makes sense to purchase these, but just not in the middle of a budget here, like, it's being proposed right now. So. Or heck, was proposed and so.
Yeah.
So the, the, the cost is three thousand dollars per camera, minimum two cameras, six thousand dollar minimum, that's annual. And that's the minimum. So these cameras wouldn't actually belong to us. Like, we could do anything with them without having the contract. So this would be in addition to an operating budget, not a capital budget, annual. So the minimum addition to the PD annual operating budget would be six thousand dollars. Based on this year's budget, I don't think we're going to have an increase of that much for PD. So it would have to be creativity in the operating budget for PD next year to make it work.
I'd be interested to know what statistics are after the trial. You know, I'm, I'm pretty hesitant on the cost. It, it seems pretty expensive for our small community yet. So that's, that's my take on it. So.
Well, I'll make a motion that we move ahead with the two-month trial of the flat camera system. With no decision on purchase until trial is over and the twenty twenty-six budget is approved.
Motion by Gary, second by Tony. Any other discussion? That is to go ahead with the trial. No commitment to any financial impact. All those in favor? Passes. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
All right, on to the next item. As chief again, discuss considering iCloud-based camera storage system.
Yeah, this was started prior to my arrival as your interim chief. Basically, the department was notified that the current server that houses our footage for the body cams and for the squad cams was coming end of life, which if in computeries or other products, end of life means basically the company is no longer going to support those. So if the system goes down, the product crap or doesn't work anymore, they will not support that anymore. You're going to have to find some other avenue to bring to life that piece of equipment or that technology. With that said, there was a proposal that was gathered under Cody Farrell, that's before you, to basically go from a housed server, which we currently have at the police department, to a cloud-based storage system. With that, there are options available for that storage system. And coming back to the village president's comment on redaction, the current system, we have a standalone computer within the police department that we basically is very limited in redaction, so it takes quite a bit of time for us to redact video. And we get quite a few records requests from defense attorneys, village prosecutor, district attorney's office and that kind of stuff. And again, with the laws that are in place, it makes it very time-consuming to make sure that we're not releasing information that we shouldn't be releasing. The iCloud system does have that built into it. And because it's almost, it's in real time, basically, instead of having a multi-step process like we have now, taking it from the server, putting it on a thumb drive, plugging that thumb drive into the standalone computer for the redaction software. It's all right there. We can do it in real time. And they have much more features, as the village president alluded to, where we can have the system recognize a certain license plate person, what have you, and then have that information blurred from that standpoint. So with moving to the cloud-based system, it's a, the total package is thirty thousand dollars. Otherwise, there is the option, we could pay it in installments. As you see on page two, with twenty twenty-five coming in at roughly sixty-six, and then the subsequent years of six, seven, eight to nine, being roughly around sixty-one hundred a year. They've given us the amount of discounts that they can give us for the cloud-based system. So there is no further if we pay it in full, which is at thirty thousand, that's listed, or if we pay it in installments from that standpoint. So, but because this is kind of the way of the world, going from housing your own server within the department to now going to a cloud-based system, it just seems like the natural course to go this direction with that. So. Questions?
Just on the quote, chief, that it expired on three eighteen.
Yeah.
We've been in contact with them.
Yeah, we've been, I've been in contact with them continuously.
And they'll still honor that.
Yep, yeah. So the other thing, too, is there is a typo. I believe, yeah, in the financial information. So it's not budgeted through the police department's operating budget. This would come through the information technology light item budget. And that's at fifty thousand. If you subtract the thirty thousand, it gives roughly, sorry, around twelve thousand, a thousand to twelve hundred, that would be remaining in that account. So, so I, in my typing this up in the wee hours of the evening, I should have put in there, will not cause the, a budget overture.
So the last, the last bullet point in financial, that it will not have
Stick the word not in there.
So is that the whole, you do this installments or the whole amount at this time?
If we do the full thirty thousand, so, and then you don't have to worry about it in, in years to come. So you wouldn't have to worry about it in twenty-six, twenty-seven.
So what, what is the total line item in the IT budget?
Fifty thousand.
So and we haven't spent any?
Yeah, spent a little bit.
It's forty-four thousand eight hundred and ninety-five dollars.
Is the balance at this point.
Unexpended.
Our monthly payment to Dependable Solutions.
Okay, it's a different, I got confused by that, too. It's a different line item. Or a different GL.
Then there would be a possible two thousand.
Yeah, it would be within the budgeted amount for, for IT hardware placement in the capital.
So I guess that was my next question. So I don't recall what, you know, that fifty thousand dollar line item, what did we have in there for expenses?
We weren't sure. We, we were switched over to a new IT provider, so we weren't sure what was going to be needed.
So, and I don't think wasn't, I haven't been on finance the last couple of months, but so they haven't come forward with any.
Yeah, but since it was documented, we don't need to run it through it.
Well, no, I understand. So, so that's, so I can say of the fifty-five hundred that we spent, is that, has that been suggestions from Dependable Solutions or has that been?
And we had to get a new, we had to get drill app time.
Okay, so.
You have room. And then what the Dependables wishlist for the rest of the year, we would still have room, what they want to.
I mean, there are other issues that we need to fix. We've been talking about.
I mean, there are other issues that we need to fix. We've been talking about for a long time and you're getting our our monitors fixed, the, you know, the. Audio really sucks if you listen to the to the videos of these these meetings, so. Um, again, it bothers me that this came. Mid-budget or mid-year here, so um, I don't doubt we need it and I'm gonna, I would defer to Mike being the IT expert here, but uh. Um, we're taking. Three fifths of our IT budget and spending it on this item when it wasn't a budgeted item.
What, I guess to that point, why wouldn't we go the payment route over five years? And and.
Kind of where I was.
And not burn. All the cash.
Yeah.
In in one, that way we have push in there if something unexpected comes up.
Yeah.
Uh, that that would be my financing side of it.
Yep.
I would agree. I've got no problem with that. As long as the assumptions are that we will be borrowing every year. Uh, and that there are no terms attached. So, I mean, if they're gonna charge us an extra six, seven percent to finance through them and then we have to go borrow for.
Right, I mean, if it's financed and they're they're charging us terms, then, yeah, the prepay would be.
So you, the schedule you have attached uh that Shelley alluded to is what it would be on an annual basis. There wouldn't be an increase, there wouldn't be a decrease. That's why they spelled it out for the full five years. Uh, what the, what the payments would be every five years. They gave the option of thirty thousand, they said, even if you wanted to do half, they said. We have no, you know, we'll just generate the invoice that we, that you would like to us to generate, whether that be just, you know, year one. Or half or all, something, you know, whatever combo they like, but, but that's why they spelled it out in the quote here, year by year, just to give you. The, you know, foresight on what it was gonna be if you went to the annual. So there's no added costs. Uh, that would be accrued.
Oh, Ian, correct me if I'm wrong. Did you say we would need to finance this then?
Yeah, this would be. Purchase, so we would finance this, whatever the annual payment is, six thousand, whatever, that would be, had to be added to our capital budget every year for the next five years. Or we do it all in one shot now.
We take it out of, if we leave the. Fifty thousand dollars that's in the, we could take it out of. Include that in the fifty thousand dollar IT budget as it is now.
You could, yeah. Um, if you do that, plus the fifty one hundred that's already been spent, plus. Uh. The recommendations from uh IT for the rest of the year, we have twelve hundred. With all their other items that they wanna do this year too.
With all the other items, that who wants to do this?
IT. Part recommendations for.
Oh, so we do have an additional list, that's what I asked before, so there is an additional list of recommendations from Dependable Solutions.
And it would still be. And everything still, it would still be under budget if we do this and all their recommendations.
Okay.
And we're not gonna do all the recommendations.
And we have twelve hundred.
We'd have twelve hundred left, after all the recommendations would be done, which I'm not recommending.
Options. But the main, the number we're worried, that we're worried about now is this year's, whether we do the thirty thousand dollars or the installment payment. And then for future years, if we leave that line item of fifty thousand dollars. In the IT budget, this would just be one of the, this would be six thousand of that fifty thousand dollars would be. Would be a known expenditure every year out of that line item.
Yeah, so far in the capital budget, it's about twenty thousand for every other year after this, so based on there. Stretching things out. Uh, it'd be a quarter of that. You have the option, you have money now this year to be able to pay for it all. You also have the ability to stretch it out five years. It's administrative burden to stretch it out five years. But you could do it, like it's not, you'd touch keep track of it.
I think what my question is, is if there's fifty thousand dollars this year, how is it fifty thousand dollars next year?
The need isn't there, because after IT and I have already gone through replacement schedules, servers, laptops, all of that. You don't need twenty thousand dollars. So we budgeted fifty this year because we weren't sure we had just switched over IT. So we didn't know what are they gonna need, what changes are they gonna recommend, or our firewall's not dated all. And so if we don't go with this. Uh. We would spend probably ten thousand dollars out of the IT budget and be done.
So then where does the balance go?
It's gonna borrow anything.
Like we we borrowed to refund ourselves at the end of the year. Uh, before we. Calculate taxes. You have the debt service.
Okay, knowing.
We just wouldn't borrow it if we didn't spend it.
It doesn't work yet, yeah, it's not cash, you just.
If I switch my hats and put my my IT hat on a little more. Um, I've got a few questions in no particular order. So. The in-house system is basically out of warranty, out of support, uh, both hardware and software. Is there an in-house system that could have been looked at or has been looked at as an option? And then what does that cost?
So the cameras, the body cameras and the in-car camera system are all the same, they're all part of this safe fleet. So it's kind of the proprietary software, so for us to download that information into another one, I don't know how that would be done.
I guess to.
If I am.
Clarify a little more, does Safe Fleet have an in-house option that we could have looked at also?
It's possible, but to replace the.
Yeah. And I'm just, oh, for for comparison.
Yeah.
I'm not necessarily advocating bringing something in-house, so uh. You know, I would, I would assume. You know, there's, there's a price tag attached to that of. I don't know. It probably is, uh, kind of goes into my next question of uh. You know, how much data is being stored, you know, like in our current system? And how much storage do we get with this service? And my concern is, is that. That is your cost driver and as we store more video footage. Uh. They're gonna be like, oh, you gotta, you gotta add another.
Terminal.
Fifty gig of storage or a hundred and and their storage cost is pretty expensive, but it bundles in the licensing of the service. So is there an incremental cost? So the first part of that is, we know how much storage we need now. And. What is the incremental cost in the size of that?
So they looked at our current in-house server to see what's on there and I can tell you the, uh, you know, the um. Deletion timeframes that were on there were way out of whack. They didn't have to be as long as they were. So in in the couple of conversations I've had with the technicians. I gave them what I want them set at, which is a lot lower. I mean, we're going with like statutory uh minimums, except for cases of sexual assault. Uh, death investigations where that footage is pretty much gonna be kept forever. Um, and those cases are kind of few and far between in our community. Um, so given the new parameters I set on there. They are very comfortable with the amount of storage that we will need at this, at this, during this five-year agreement, I'll call it.
So, so they're not expecting any additional storage needed.
Yep.
Over five years.
Yeah, so for instance, they were saving like test footage, so you gotta test the cameras to make sure they're operational. They were saving those for like six months and I'm like. You need those for like a hundred and twenty days, which is the minimum that, you know, the the court decisions are kind of indicating. I'm like, so let's dump that, you know, because, yeah, they're small files, but those small files, when you're checking them over and over again, mount up to be big files, so.
So you mentioned some. Some data needs to be kept indefinitely.
Mm-hmm.
Is there an archive ability or something that those can get moved into a lower tier of storage that might cost less or uh? Be taken off of the cloud and stored in evidence locker or somewhere?
Yeah.
So there's the ability to do that?
Yeah, there is, there is the ability to do that.
Not that.
The only question that pops into my head would be. Just some oddballs, you know, like, well, I'll give you for instance, um, there was a death investigation that we assisted on out in the county. And I wanna say that happened like four years ago or something. But all of a sudden, there's an organization that wants to look into that death investigation and is, so from a redaction standpoint. I would have to ask a clarifying question with Safe Fleet on how we could import that back into the system so that we could do the redaction if we needed to. So just, so I hope, I'm kind of shooting from the hip here, because I was kind of brought in last minute, but I got. Knowledge to be dangerous, let's call it that. So I hope I'm answering your questions as best I can.
So, uh. Regarding retention.
Mm-hmm.
In the the quote, it said one year retention and forty percent retained. What, what does that mean? I don't even understand that.
So basically, uh, coming back to the answer I gave previously, um, all the footage that we bring in from camp, body cams and from squad cam. They're anticipating that X amount is gonna be deleted with the timeframes that I have set. So you're gonna have like a forty percent that may extend beyond a year. Okay, so I got it, yep.
Question about the end of life, and you probably don't know this because you're, you just came in. Into this whole mess. It's a little concerning to me that end of life was in February.
Mm-hmm.
We're just now hearing about this.
Yeah, so it was one thing to A, try to wrap my head around it. Um, and then B. In the capital improvement budget, there was a camera replacement for one of the squads, and so it was a lot of information. So I did specifically ask, I'm like, what is the probability that this is gonna crash like tomorrow? And they're like, your system is fine. When they did the checks on like the um amount of storage that we were using on a consi, on a routine basis or consistent basis. They said, at this point, we don't see that there's an issue. We don't see any corrupted, questionable, you know, uh.
So they have been in and looked at our system.
Yeah, yep. Yep. So, yeah, so that's why I wasn't in a rush. And then in addition, just the price tag alone, you know, like anything. I'm just like, oh my gosh, so Gabe and I have been talking a lot on how we can make this happen, you know?
I think you touched on this already, but all of our existing squad cameras and body cameras work with this cloud service.
Right.
You don't have to replace any of those to make them function.
Oh, so they're all just, you know, I get.
A lot of IT projects, we're like, hey, we just changed the backend and now guess what? Your computer, your client app doesn't connect.
Yeah, so, so the camera, like the squad camera that we're replacing now. Um, is basically our oldest one in the fleet. So from a technology standpoint, that's why we had it built into the capital from that standpoint. Um, Gabe and I have talked about too, instead of going forward with with squad builds and that kind of stuff. Uh, basically looking at the squad as an entire unit, so the computer needs to be replaced or the camera needs to be replaced and this, but. We do that all at that time instead of piecemealing things together so that we have a better tracking of the age of that technology. So.
Do you know what the life expects, expectancy of a camera is?
About five to seven.
Okay.
Yeah. So and and they're intensive use and they're out in the weather and I should say the body cameras mainly, the in-squad obviously is protected. Pardon me?
Squad cameras are inside.
Yeah, yep. But still, I mean, with windows open and that kind of stuff, you have, you know, it's not like an office setting where you have a nice IT closet that, you know. Is more protective of the elements.
So the uh. The quote includes uh all the migration costs of reconfiguring.
Yep.
The the cameras to work with the new system.
Yep.
Uh, transferring any existing.
Mm-hmm.
Data to the cloud from, that we need to retain.
Yep.
Okay.
And implementing the new, the new retention periods and all that stuff.
So. How is this system supported? Is it uh something that are uh. Existing IT group will need to know how to manage?
It's uh, it's part of the agreement that they support this through this agreement for five years. So any issues that arise, except for, um, let me put it this way, when the squad rolls into the garage, it hooks up to the PD's wifi to do the download. So, um, if there's an issue with that, that may be a Dependable Solutions and uh Safe Fleet conversation. So similar to like our camera systems that are in the, in the department themselves and the interview rooms and the lobby and that kind of stuff. Uh, it's sometimes a conversation between Dependable Solutions and Omni Technologies. So.
Do you foresee needing new cameras in the. Near future, within that five years? I'm not sure when we got cameras.
Yeah, and I'm, I don't know that, and like I said, going forward and talking with Gabe, if that does need to be replaced as far as body cameras or any of that. Um, that would be addressed with each kind of squad build.
Okay.
Because there is a docking station um for the body cameras in the squad as well, so.
So the quote is based on. Our existing data usage and the number of cameras we have, uh, is there, are there any increases if we add cameras? Additional officer starts and, you know, we're good, or another squad comes into the fleet that. Are there, are there any licensing per device type of charge?
No, so from that standpoint, there is not, so. Yeah, so if we were to add cameras, but in the same manner of speaking, like. Previous administrations never wore body cameras because I'm covering some patrol, you know, the camera that I'm wearing now may be shared with like part timers, you know? So, uh, basically when they download the video, it's assigned to that camera and then you have to go back into the system and label that accordingly. You know, case number, officer, that kind of stuff.
I'm just, I'm just concerned about if we add.
Yeah.
Additional devices or something that, you know, there's.
Yeah.
Oh, that's another fifty bucks a month there.
So currently the department is authorized seven, that's cheap on down. Um, and you have seven cameras and then you have four squad cars and so each one of those squad cars has. I don't see, and then with the new vehicle coming in, the current, that's camera system that's currently in the twenty eighteen SUV will be transferred over to the truck. So, uh, from that standpoint, so.
So along those same lines, uh. Thinking it's bigger in the future, um, because I've got experience with a similar system when I did work for Ryan Brothers Ambulance. Uh. What about the possibility of extending this to fire EMS?
That would be.
I, I mean, yeah, just, I know that's not a real budget concern or anything right now, but uh, from what I saw on their website, they.
They would not be liable for something that's not ours.
Yeah, that would be my concern, because they're their own entity, they're not a village entity per se. So. All right, sorry, Gabe, that is, we, we do have the camera systems on uh whether or not we replace them on the schedule, they're on the three to five year technology replacement schedule, so.
Exhausted my list.
So. I just wanna review the finances again. There's fifty thousand dollars in this year's IT budget. We spent fifty five hundred dollars of that. Leaving us about forty five thousand dollars. If we took this thirty thousand dollars and paid it now, they'd leave us about fourteen thousand dollars and. And you have a list of how many, how much for possible IP projects?
Twelve thousand dollars.
So.
That gives us two thousand.
And really, we. And your intention is in next year's budget, that fifty thousand dollar line item is gonna be a twenty thousand dollar line item.
Yeah, because it's, then it gets onto the replacement schedules and. As things get too much, then we push things back.
I'll make a motion to see what happens, that we. Enter into this contract and with the total payment made in the, out of the two thousand twenty five IT budget.
Good. You're telling, okay.
Literally half a second. It could have been just a distance. So we've got a motion by Gary, seconded by Shelley to uh. Prove the purchase of the, calling the iCloud historic system. Uh, with one payment out of the twenty twenty five budget. Any other discussions?
Would it be advantageous to us to pay only part of it and then pay it on a yearly basis? Would we get penalized at all?
Oh.
Oh. Ian had mentioned it would it would be a borrow.
Yeah, it's going to be a borrow regardless. It's just whether or not we just have to hold on to that six thousand change recurring. So we bleed over twenty thirty one. Capital budgets. Someone have it doesn't another.
It's not having to track it administratively.
Yeah.
It's just done. Right. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
I.
Post. On motion passes. And next, I um, discuss consider stop sign placement ordinance.
It's ordinance is technically a resolution, but.
Issue, resolution, yeah.
You wrote the agenda.
I'm just reading the agenda.
It is attached as a resolution, so we're fine.
So right off the bat, I have a question. So I've seen that the estimated cost for each stop sign is one thousand four hundred ninety eight dollars.
Yeah, I used to ask.
Yeah, I want to track down source of that.
So Gary, do you remember? Oh, I know.
You're right, that's thirty six dollars, yeah.
Yeah, they used to get in front of prison.
Yeah, well, the signs come from, yeah, DOC.
Yep.
So the only, and they're not that expensive. Yeah, yeah, when I saw that, I thought that's an expensive six by six or four by four, we're putting that on. So I can't believe that that's the number that.
Do you know that came from?
Because that's that price?
Yeah.
I'd have to see.
Sixteen thousand.
Sixteen thousand dollars.
Let me look back at the old emails here.
Yeah, we could clear that part.
That was the price for all of them, I'd say, you know, but uh.
Yeah, that's a whole different.
Don't we just put them on like a six by six or a four by four, right?
Stop signs are currently forty four dollars and eight cents a piece. Uh, posts are sixty two dollars a piece.
It's a hundred bucks a piece, so it's fourteen hundred for all of them.
Okay. Okay.
Well, plus.
Plus Drew's time.
Well, yeah.
So then my next question is, is all of these are on North Shore?
Between.
Oh, yeah, okay. Now that I'm reading my own writing, yeah. It wasn't worded from very well, so I should just stop doing this stuff in the, all right, let's put it.
Let's have Nicole start drafting stuff. So all of these, you want two stop signs northwest and southeast on Dane, Carrie, Ace, King, Queen, and one on John Street? So at every intersection on North Shore, you want a stop sign?
Not, not.
No, they'd be on the north south. You would stop on the north south streets, not on.
There's stop signs there already.
No, there's not.
Really?
No.
That's kind of dumb.
Well, there's there's a stop sign at uh, is it Carrie or Ace and uh, North Shore? And then there's one down at John Street. That's the only, I'm John Street on both ends. And there's no North Shore and.
You're kind of.
And Carl.
So where Dane Street meets North Shore.
There's a stop sign here on Carrie Street.
Yeah.
In North Shore.
Yeah, Carrie and North Shore there is right.
Yeah.
Yeah, and John and North Shore and John and Boulevard, there are stop signs. But the other, all the other intersections off those of Dane, Carrie, Ace, King, Queen, and John, there's not stop signs.
Yes, Connie. You realize you're just putting up stop signs, nobody's going to stop it?
Yeah, but you write a ticket for that.
Nobody stops it.
Well, don't think nobody, I.
Well, I do too, but hardly anybody stops at stop signs anymore. It's crazy.
I guess I'm curious what the cameras that brought this on, I mean.
Well, okay, so since I was the one that brought this up, I will clean my case, but I live in that neighborhood. I have been almost hit by UPS and Amazon drivers just flying around that neighborhood.
Well, do you think they're still going to stop at a stop sign?
They fly over town.
They do.
They do stop for the two new stop signs that we put right there by the park. Otherwise.
Park. Because.
I I beg to disagree with you, Shelley, but.
I live on Vine Street. Let me tell you, that thing is a racetrack and I have completed for twenty plus years. UPS, FedEx, Amazon. Teenagers, old farts. Nobody stops at those stop signs ever.
In his neighborhood there.
I, I've got my, I've got mine. I know who's.
Two thousand dollars a year.
My point is, is, okay, I guess effort's fourteen hundred dollars for stops. That's not so bad, but I think it's kind of overkill because that neighborhood has been there for a mighty long time. I don't know of any real serious accidents. I don't know.
Do you have those statistics?
Any.
For what?
For the crashes.
Yeah, there's no crashes in that neighborhood.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
I guess you have not been.
I thought Theresa said there were two.
So that was where I went on the highway off of North Shore and then off.
Carl.
Right, Carl, yeah. Carl's popular place. It is. North Shore has.
Yes.
But in the neighborhood itself, there is.
I didn't think so. So I just, I can't justify putting that many stop signs up there. And if there was something like one intersection, like my intersection, we had to put in four way stop just because I can't, there was a rollover, there was a T-boner rollover crash at my intersection quite a few years ago. That was justified. Those stop signs needed to be there. But if there's no accidents, if there's no it's just because people are driving like idiots, I can't justify putting that many stop signs up. And that's a lot of resources for Drew and his crew that are already stretched as thin as they can be. Sorry, I'm a jerk here, but I'm going to have to say no.
There's already stop signs on John Street.
Yeah, both ends of John Street have got it. No, not not the corner of.
Just in North Shore. There's a four way stop on John and Carl. There's no stop sign on John and North Shore. There are two stop signs. There's one on each end of Harry Street, one at Carl and one at North Shore already.
Yep.
Which is on that list. Yeah, Harry, North Shore, and Carl, but so those those would come off the list because there's already stop signs there.
I live on King Street. I'd rather not have stop signs at the end of my street. You know, if you're not smart enough to look both ways before you pull it up and you probably shouldn't.
It's, it's, you know. I'm going to assume a lightly traveled residential street. So there'd be at minimum two less in this. There wouldn't be any on on uh, Harry Street because they're they're already there according to Google Maps. I was just driving out there. I'm sitting here. So.
We're down to nine. And my other question was, so let's take Dane Street. If we put one of the intersection of Dane and North Shore. That would not be the northwest corner. That would be the southwest corner. Right?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, all these corners. The corners that are listed on here are wrong.
They're they're reversed because Dane and North Shore would be southeast and Dane and Carl would be northeast.
One's got to be west and one's got to be east, so it'd be southwest and northeast would be the corner.
They're kind of reversed.
Has there been anybody else that's come forward wanting stop signs out there? You're aware of Chris? Voiced anything, no calls, walk-ins, emails?
Nope.
I think uh, open to deny stop signs.
Second that.
At all, the addresses listed above.
Yes, you can make a motion to deny.
Apparently you just.
You don't usually do negative emotion.
I have a motion to approve. You don't motion.
Yeah, but you don't need.
You guys.
Next.
Yeah.
We need the vote.
I just want.
I makes a motion to do it.
Have to make a motion to do it. And that would have to go to a vote. And if it passes, then it happens. If it's voted down, then it's done.
I rescind my motion.
Navigated that right, correct?
I'm good with that.
All right.
It's good.
I'm okay with.
So what do I know over here?
So any other discussion on police or stop sign placement?
I have only one question. I just, maybe I'm the only one that thinks this way. But as you're coming up. Let me tell you the name of the street. But you have a stop, you don't have a stop sign coming out of Catholic church, but you have one on the main road that goes through. To me, it should be vice versa. Is there a reason why there's a stop sign there stopping the traffic but not coming out from the church? Because it seems like it just goes against all.
Are you talking going out on the CC?
Um, no, coming into Trump.
On CC.
Anyway, that's, that's a.
That is not CC.
Yeah, that's.
That's not, that's not this.
Yeah, that'll.
That's not this resolution.
No, I know, but I just asked the question.
I don't know. Cause I haven't. So uh.
I think that's great.
Yes, motion. Quiet. Okay, hearing. Last chance. Hearing no motion, we're going to move on that that didn't have support. So next item is discuss and consider the police staffing scheduling program.
As noted in the in the memo, uh, basically forever. Uh, the department has basically used a Word document to create a calendar uh, to do the staffing schedule. Uh, there's quite a bit of time um, that Molly especially um, in the interim after Bill left has dedicated to scheduling issues. Um, I've kind of taken over for her from that standpoint. And now it's kind of um, um, basically a twofer. Um, I, we address it constantly, like this week alone. Uh, we've addressed scheduling issues four times. And so with a paper copy of that, sending out four different emails and expecting staff to keep track of that. Um, I don't fault staff. We haven't had an issue with it during my short stint here, but it has been an issue in in the past where staff hasn't shown up at their assigned time because they looked at the wrong paper calendar uh, or schedule that was sent out. Um, what this program allows uh, will be real time tracking of changes and notifications to staff. Uh, but it's on the duty schedule. And sometimes, especially with special events and that kind of stuff. Um, that had, that can be an issue with them popping up last minute or what have you. In addition there too, it's extremely difficult um, to track um, sick time, uh, vacation time use, that kind of stuff uh, from that. So um, and then we have no good way either of, basically it's a two tiered system. We have the paper schedule, then we have a paper time sheet that they fill out. And then we fill out the payroll system electronic form to get shipped over to Village Hall. Um, because there's no way of combining all that stuff together. Uh, this would allow basically for two, the paper schedule and the time sheet to be combined into one. And then this also allows for the transmitting of that information that's on the schedule to the payroll system through a um, C CSV file. Um, that would be set up between the payroll system and uh, either one of these systems. So it streamlines things, it takes less time, it's in real time. So you're, you know, officers sitting around the kitchen table with family or what have you. And they want to plan something out, they can just log on to the system via their cell phone or via their computer, see what the schedules look like, whether that vacation is going to work or not. Um, and then they can also file their request at this time. So um, which for notification from us, it's not sitting, the time off requests aren't sitting in a basket in either Molly's or my's basket to sign off with. So uh, from that standpoint, uh, both systems have great benefits. Um, the uh, time clock plus um, Atlantic system had that um, vehicle maintenance and mileage tracking. Uh, because basically the officers on their department issued cell phone can time or, you know, clock in, clock out, and they can also enter their squad mileage and whatever maintenance issues there may be with that. Um, so that we get that basically more in real time, you know. Because they have to clock in, clock out, where a lot of times it's like, oh, yeah, I forgot. Uh, my oil, my squad needs an oil change. That was about two weeks ago. And it's like, oh, okay, thanks, you know, so they can do everything in real time from that standpoint. Um, from, so from a pricing standpoint, what's nice about doing it and kind of getting back to some of Gary's points about uh, the budgeting. Um, I, our recommendation is is to go with the time clock plus Atlantic. Uh, because A, the upfront costs are cheaper and then B, the annual cost going forward. Because this would be an annual operating expense that would have to be um, included into the budget. Um, is a lot easier for the department budget to handle. So um, though there's not a specific line item that this would come out of listed in this. Um, what's nice about it, doing it early enough in the year here is that we can do what I call a smoothing effect. So that if we see that whatever line item this is going to be attributed to, that's, you know, going over or the overall budget is going over or starting to go over, we can make adjustments accordingly to help smooth out that effect to prevent that over budgeting.
Yes, they're fucking mouth for this.
Yeah, so right now, as far as Q one goes, the department is twenty two thousand dollars under budget.
That includes salary?
Yeah. So that spreadsheet we were talking about, that's where I kind of drew some of these numbers. But this is overall budget, though. This isn't per line item.
So I'm remembering the same thing I brought up in police committee twice. Number one, this is a mid-year ask here again. Number two. For the four people or five people that we schedule. I don't know, I I don't think this is worth it. Um.
It's a lot.
Yeah, well, and again, we may be twenty two thousand dollars under budget now. We're two people short, so we're going to have overtime costs that uh, we had, we cut a lot of money out of the overtime budget because we thought we'd be full staff. We're not full staff, so there's going to be overtime costs that that are going to have to be accounted for by the end of the year. Uh, because we're getting into the busy season with festivals and and uh, and outdoor events, so I'm going to make a motion that we include this in the twenty twenty six budget discussion.
Second.
All right, motion in a second. Additional discussion?
Do you know right now how much time is spent on scheduling? Like Gary said, we have three officers, all yourself, five people.
Yeah, so and I'm just going off of what Molly told me when you were more up to, you know, full staffing. Uh, basically two to three hours of her shift is usually denoted to.
Every shift?
Pretty much.
I, I find that hard to believe. That's all.
Yeah.
You have sick outs. You have time off requests that come in last minute. And some of those requests are in quarter hour increments. So just like this week alone, as of Sunday, because one of the officers has a family matter she's dealing with. And she's doing it, she's playing it year day by day. We've had to create contingencies, let's put it, uh, who's going to work when? So.
And my other point is if everybody in this village submits a paper time sheet. So we're going to look at a system for the police department to do electronic time sheets and we should look for everybody. So maybe we expand this.
We all, we don't do paper copies for any department.
So you get an, you get an electronic, a spreadsheet or right? What do you get from?
No, we have something called MyPay that hooks up to our.
Oh, I see. So why isn't the police department hooked up to MyPay?
They are. They input their time in both a paper time sheet. Well, last, last I knew anyway, it was paper time sheet. And then it was uploaded into MyPay.
And they can request time off. I think what Chris is asking for is, um, be seeing what other people requested. But you have the ability to request time off or deny it or halve your time. And I, as the administrator, I approve to all the time sheets and everything's digital.
Okay.
For Village End.
Wow. I still know what are my initial.
Well, and the state here too says it expires on 2/22/2025.
What's that?
It says that code expiration date expired already.
Yeah. So basically that's because of conversations held and they just wanted to give me the quote. Basically it's still a valid quote even though it expired, but they wanted to get a price to us. So the way their systems work on that end, that's what it would allow.
If you were going to approve it, you'd just say not to exceed that number.
Right.
Yeah. And that's why if you notice too, on that quote, there's two blacked out boxes because their system included taxes and.
Yeah.
That's not, it's non-taxable. So that's why I blacked it out. We're getting there.
How many people do you anticipate us having to hire? Because the villages anticipated the double in size in five to 10 years. What's our staffing going to be? What's your staffing going to look like then? Cause we're understaffed now. How many do you normally have? Six?
Yeah. So right now we're currently authorized seven from chief on down. So, yeah.
You're at four?
We're, yeah. Chief Molly, myself, or chief Molly.
Katie.
Katie. Yeah. And then Crystal. So, yeah.
But Crystal's home by Wednesday. So you're saying you have to hire more.
Katie.
Have you have Vicki?
Oh, Vicki too. Sorry.
Katie, Molly and Chief.
Yeah.
Um, I, the administrator realm, I look at two, the national average and what I kind of like is two officers per thousand. Sworn officers is the number that I feel comfortable with, which is right now we're a little bit over that. So it's kind of, don't touch it for a while, but.
Are you crazy?
What? Two per thousand?
At some point we're going to have officers. Is that what you just said?
Two per thousand. So you have two officers for every thousand. So you have 3,000, you have four officers. Three of six for 3,000, which is exactly where we're at.
Well, we don't have 24 hour coverage anymore.
Yeah. But that is for 24 hour coverage. Well, that's where his, that's the recommendation is two per thousand is kind of the national average.
That's your average.
That's the kind of state average is 2.1.
Right. I keep in the town of Bloom, which is a little fuzzier than it is here right now. And we had chief, deputy, three sergeants, one free shipman, two officers full time for each ship 24/7. And then there was supplemental, like part-time officers working. So not, not too far off.
So the national average is 2.4 per thousand. And then Wisconsin average is.
And then basically to provide 24/7 coverage, if you include training time, uh, sick time, vacation time, that kind of stuff. Um, to provide 24/7 coverage, you should have a minimum of five officers. So.
That's where I get concerned because we only have Molly, Vicki and Katie.
Mm-hmm. And then Wisconsin is two per.
Cause if Molly falls and breaks her leg off or, you know, chicken or something. It's not unheard of, trust me. That's all. So.
So what's, what's.
We're trying to, we need more officers.
Well, yeah, that's not what this.
Yeah, that's not what this conversation is about. We're working towards filling space.
Molly right now is only scheduling four people, correct?
Yeah. And just four people alone has been trying. Let me put it that way.
No, when you hire more, it only is.
Yeah, it only gets, so, so who is going to be the champion of this project to transition to a scheduling system?
That, that, it would be me. Yeah, implementing it. And then working in conjunction with Molly, who has the historical knowledge.
Yep.
From that standpoint. So, yeah. Um, yeah. And I, I can say that, you know, in, in my 20 years of being a chief, I've done everything from two full-time, a chief, two full-time officers and like four part-time officers. And that gets real interesting in itself. Uh, for a community again of 1,200 all the way up to 10,000, where basically we had 12 officers. That's from the chief on down, um, from an agency that standpoint. So scheduling is, when you're in the public safety realm is a challenging effort. Um, from trying to provide, you know, the 24 hour coverage when you're up to full staff to also mediating, you know, time off requests, making sure that, you know, if it's a festival weekend that we still have, the officers still have enough downtime, but we still have the coverage. So it can be, you know, it can kind of sometimes be like playing Jenga, you know? But it'd be, so if we went with, no, it'd be 1,600.
1,600.
After the initial startup of.
Recurring 1,670.
Well then what is this number? Year one subscription instead of 5,000?
That's the power plus. That's not the one he's recommending.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, from two vendors, the type plus is the one he's recommending.
Yep. Second bullet point.
64.
Yep.
Year two is 1,674.
Sorry.
Recurring.
Well, that's fine. So, um, so maybe Ian or Gabe can share a little bit about
what is the value of being able to import their time into MyPay? Has it been verified that you can import a CSV of time into the payroll system? Is that something been useful?
I have not checked with civic. I don't know if you asked on our.
Yeah. So I, that's why I, I asked you the question, who that goes through.
Okay.
On MyPay. So I could see if our system was going to be compatible with their system to do that import.
Okay.
And they've done it for other agencies. So, yeah.
So I guess not knowing how often departments work, I, why, why don't officers just? How, how is time entered normally? I mean, wouldn't they just enter into MyPay? Or?
Yeah, exactly.
Or might, might have an extra step.
I know that, that, um, if it was here, they did, uh, paper forms, um, to fill out all their time. And then it was inputted at the end of the pay period into MyPay for approval. And then I think Cody pretty much kept the same thing. I don't know if it's done the same way now. Yeah. So I asked about taking away the paper time sheet. And they say you do that and it's going to be even more difficult to verify time. Oh, because there's a lot of correcting that goes on every pay period of time sheets. So I'm hoping to basically by streamlining this process and they only have to enter it once, that it will be easier. And I've seen it where they have one thing entered into the payroll system. They have another thing reflected on their time sheet, but then the schedule reflects something totally different. So now we're making phone calls, sending texts, trying to verify between the three, the three things, you know? And with the union too, with the union contract, they have shift differentials. They have FTO pay. Um, so yeah, there's, it's not just your kind of straightforward Monday through Friday. Um, job, you know?
That's, that's also why I kind of asked who's, who's championing this, doing the checks and balances.
Yeah. Yeah. So previously it was Molly. Um, now it's me with Molly's assistants. Let's put it that way. Um, so yeah. So then implementing this system, it would be me championing it forward and then having the training on it. And then just getting it down to one platform, let's call it.
So the officers would be entering their own time into this system, correct?
No. What would happen is we'd make the duty roster. They would basically, we would put in their time, the shifts they work. And then if they had any type of special assignment, we would be adding that. And then the system basically calculates all that into the, um, I'm going to call it for lack of a better term, the spreadsheet that gets plugged into the village's payroll system. So, yeah. So all they're doing is verifying that, you know, they'll have to sign off on it electronically. That what is plotted on that schedule is what they work.
Okay.
So, yep. So we kind of take a lot of fingers out of the cookie jar, so to speak. In addition to with this, it allows us to generate reports on how much time we're spending on training, how much time we're spending on special events, how much time we're spending on like fleet maintenance or, you know, a squad computer or camera issue, that kind of stuff. Cause we can put in different designations to track the time on what we're spending, you know, on the various aspects of our day.
This is, so like you just put this on their cell phone, clock in, clock out.
Yep.
The first time off.
Mm-hmm.
Except that.
And then if they have to, if they end up working overtime because they got a late call or something and have to stay behind to do the report because the person's in custody or something like that, they basically could log on, add their additional time, uh, check the right boxes and then ship it off and it automatically goes onto the schedule.
So the initial setup is 20, because you're asking for the time clock plus, correct?
Yes. So the initial setup then is $2,264. And then in year two and beyond, it's going to be $1,674 annually.
So we have a motion on the table already for putting this into the budget for 2026.
To consider for the 25th, sixth budget.
Okay.
But it gets seconded?
Yes.
Yes.
So. Any other discussion? So, um, sounds like concerns about if your request again. So, um. All those in favor?
I.
Hi.
opposed. For 2026. Thank you folks.
Thanks, Chief.
Yeah. You got a lot of time tonight. All right. Uh, on to the next items. Just consider amendment to section 403 dot one of the property maintenance code. Ian?
Chapter 403 of the village code is property maintenance. For some reason unknown to me, it only includes residential property. So unless a property, a commercial, industrial or otherwise property has a specific conditional use permit that outlines any property maintenance things, there are no property maintenance standards for anything commercial, industrial or otherwise. I mean, if, if it gets to a certain point, it may come under nuisance or, or some other statute, but in there, yeah, our, our code is unenforceable for basic property maintenance things for commercial industrial properties. Language and pronia would change that.
I'll make a motion that we work against number 2025 dash O three. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
I.
I. Opposed. It passes.
Good question.
So now this will be commercial also.
Commercial. Yep. My stuff that's crazy, it's, you know, every window shall actually have glass.
Yes.
Every door will be operable, that kind of stuff.
Okay. So, I don't mind. I won't bring it up here.
Okay. Uh, and item number 11, or community development authority.
Oh, that's me.
Yeah, it's you.
We had a good meeting. We, uh, we went over the new sign for the edge of town. I think we're going to change up the design of it a little bit.
You okay?
Yeah. Otherwise, there's been some really good discussion about possibly looking into brands to beautify downtown. So that's really about it for right now.
Patients miscellaneous business news announcements. Tonight, I mean, any of the events?
Check the list of approved ones. You guys approved a bunch.
Yeah.
Hey, we have a bunch more coming up too, for approval next time around. So we're, we're going to be busy.
For end season.
I'm excited.
I think, I think you're going to see a lot of actions in the, in the.
I think the, I mean, we'll talk about it again. I mean, the fish boil and the top rock are the next few ones.
We'll be all. Your agenda items. All right. How do I navigate going into closed session here?
You get to read that paragraph and then you get to read the agenda, the items we're going into closed session for. So. Can you narrate a voice?
All right.
You're.
It was locked. I didn't even know I had it ready. All of these.
Village of Belleville Village Board will enter into a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19 dot eight five subsection one, subsection E for the purpose of deliberating and negotiating the purchasing of public properties and investing in public funds or conducting other special business. Whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, the village board may reconvene into open session and take action on the subject matter discussed in closed session. And tonight's close sessions will, uh, well, just consider next steps regarding 130 South Ein Street. Establish a negotiation position regarding the Belleville Fire and EMS contract. And establish a negotiation position regarding the purchase of commercial property in tax increment district number three.
Second.
Since we'll call, correct?
Good. Yeah. Stand up that second. Okay. Okay. Thanks. Okay. Um, trustee Bannon.
Yep.
Trustee Bongar.
Yes.
Trustee Iker Kraut.
Yes.
Trustee Kazmar.
Yes.
Trustee Ward.
Yes.
Trustee Ziegler.
Yeah.
President Service.
Yes.
All right. We are in closed session. At eight oh.
So can we...
Discussing closed section.
I mean, should we tell them?
I can't hear. Why not?
Yep.
Or some... In the conversation part?
Yeah, since they're not... Window was here. Is anybody outside?
Nope.
Oh, don't worry.
We're out there. So, hey buddies. Give direction administration to continue negotiations on 130 South 9th Street. And see the scheduling of fire EMS counter. And the purchase of first property to three. Uh oh. Undertaking motion.
I make motion.
Take it. Second.
I brought my beef stick. Those are my dinner.
Longer than last one, but...
I gotta have audio for that.
It is audio.
No, you just...
This has audio.
I just turned my own audio off. Pre-emptively turning the meeting off. Okay. You guys need to vote on that adjournment.
Yeah. I was in favor of adjournment. I have...
Turned at 9:08.